Good.
We'll call our step in for the summaries when it's their turn on the agenda.
I'm sorry, please.
We'll call in Jaclyn and Melissa when it's their time on the agenda.
Okay, good. Okay, so at three o'clock. Yes. The Jefferson County Health Department Board of Trustees. Call the November regular meeting of orders. So can I have a vote, please?
Mr. View.
Here.
Dr. Henry. Mr. Prater.
Here.
Mr. Pig.
Here.
Ms. Davis. Here.
Okay, so we have four members present, which is a quorum. And we have one visitor today. What's your name, ma'am?
Sheriff Sampson.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your interest. Normally, Dr. Henry reads the mission and vision of the Health Department, but she's not here today, so. Mr. Pig, could you do that, please?
Yes, sir. The mission of the Health Department, Jefferson County Health Department will champion positive health outcomes and behaviors, through innovative programs and community engagement. The vision, advancing the health and safety of Jefferson County.
Okay, thank you. So, next item is approval of the agenda. Everyone should have gotten a copy of that. So can I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Sorry. Okay, a motion and a second, so is there any discussion on that? Okay, so the agenda is written as approved. Next, we have some approval.
She's making my point of order. You didn't take a vote on that.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, so all in favor of approving the agenda as written, please say aye.
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 You want to vote? I'm sorry, thank you.
Sure.
All right, so we have approval of some meeting minutes and some expenditures. First set of meeting minutes are from September 23rd. And everybody, you should have gotten a copy of those. All board members are present at that meeting. So can I have a motion to approve those as written?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve those. Any discussion on that? Okay, hearing done, all in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
You want to vote? Okay, those are approved. Next set of minutes to approve is from October 28th. Those were also sent out today. And all board members are present at that meeting.
I make a motion we approve the October 28th, 21 meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to approve those as written. Discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of approving those, please say aye.
Aye.
You want to vote? Okay, so we have approval of the October 2021 expenditures. Amount I have for those is $181,490.20.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So the motion and second to approve those. Discussion on that?
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, are we talking about number one, 9:30, Stinky? Or October?
Yes, I understand that it just says October. October's what kind of package?
Um, 10:1 through 10:31 this year. Okay. Okay, so. Any other discussion? We have a vote on approving those expenditures. Everyone in favor, please say aye.
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 You want to vote? Okay, so those are approved.
Did everybody vote?
No, we only have two ayes. Are you voting, Ms. Davis?
I was still looking over them, so I'm going to say aye. Yeah.
Say aye. Okay, so those are approved, three to one. Okay, next is approval of the October 21, 2021 electronic payments. The actual amount of those was $486,678.42.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, so the motion and second to approve those. Any discussion? Okay, hearing done, all in favor of approving those electronic payments, please say aye.
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 Okay, so that's four of them. And lastly, we have preapproval of the December 21 electronic payments. Estimated amount for those is $562,197.25.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so the motion second to approve those. Discussion? Okay, hearing done, all in favor of preapproving those electronic payments, please say aye.
Aye.
You want to vote?
I do have a point of order, and I think it's to Ms. Davis's question. In the pack, if there is, there is a check out to register from 9/1 to 10/1 on the back page of the preapproval of the electronic payments on the back page. Was there a question you had on about those?
No, my question was about the attorney fees again.
Oh.
So the one you're looking at looks like it's the visa?
Ah, okay, okay.
Probably still on the cards.
These fees that stand out is the September 4th.
It's on the 10/1 to 10/31 expenses.
There's a summarized breakdown of it on the last page.
Yes.
Sorry, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so next we have a director's report. Director Volmar, please.
Um, I'd ask, do you mind, Reverend Jaffe and Melissa? Oh, thank you, Steve. So, one of the things that we've discussed is getting back to being able to start doing some of our reports for our programs. This has been a traditional activity within our board meetings to keep you apprised for activities as well as the progress of programs. During our heaviest moments, we have not been able to be able to allocate that time even though the activities have been able to continue throughout the the last 18 months. What I've done is I've invited Melissa Parley, who is our clinical services manager, and Jaclyn Brown, who is our community services manager, to come give a brief summary of the reports that you have included in your packets as well as to just be able to provide some sort of top level overview of the activities that we've been doing. So I'm going to get to trouble for a second, Melissa, if you don't mind starting with the clinical services report.
Sure. Is everybody ready? Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you. So I gave you guys in your packets a PowerPoint presentation. And this presentation, we also give to the employees whenever they are doing onboarding. And it describes our clinical services, so you can have that as a reference. So if you have any questions about our programs or our services or our contracts or grants, hopefully, that presentation can answer those questions. So what I'm going to talk about today is just some highlights from October that we had for clinical services. So flu vaccinations is a big one for October for us. And not only do we do flu vaccinations in the office setting, so in our clinical offices, we also go out into the community and provide flu vaccinations. And we've had a good response this year providing flu vaccinations in the school setting. And I provided a report for you that shows in October what schools we visited and what, how many vaccines we provided. We also, as far as immunizations, we also have an adult immunization grant. And we are providing COVID vaccinations both in office and in the community through that grant as well. And we are required to report to Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services on a monthly basis. And they have certain requirements as far as what we report on how we are doing community-based vaccination plans. And so you guys have a copy of that report that shows how many community-based clinics we provided and what those are looking at. As far as some of the other highlights for clinical services, family planning, we had some guideline changes. That had gone to November 8th, so we spent a large amount of time in October going over and updating our guidelines for family planning in Title X. We're preparing to hire an education and outreach coordinator for that program to help with the outreach of both our, the Right Time Initiative program, but also for, to increase the family planning patient base. For lead, we are hitting some challenges right now with our lead screening. We, the vendor manufacturer that we use for in-house lead screening has had some back orders, has had some technical difficulties, and it has led to some increased difficulty in us doing lead screening in the office. So we're looking at other opportunities and other ways to do that. Right now, we're able to do venous lead in offices until we can get those other alternatives. We also got some updates to CDC guidelines that haven't necessarily gone into effect yet. But the CDC guidelines change from a level of case management from a five to a three. So that is going to increase our case load coming up. We're still waiting for the state to update our guidelines on that. But it is something that we're looking at how we're going to manage those cases going forward. Mobile wellness, I guess you guys had a presentation from our mobile wellness crew. I think it was last month that they presented. So we have been in the process of increasing activities in the community through our mobile wellness program. We were able to get a budget reallocation from our lender for that program that allows for additional medical assistance on the van while we're in the community. And that has greatly increased our capacity to see patients while we're in the community. Let's see. The other program I want you guys to be aware of is our dental program. So we are now back in schools. Our Smiles to Go Dental Program, it started with two schools. We started with summer high school in September, and we took on a brand-new client that we have not done in the past. So we did festive schools starting in October. And they have done a great job of getting back into those services and using new software and new processes through the dental program, and I'm really proud of that too. Okay, that's all I have for today. Any questions?
You got a question, sorry, dude. I was going to ask you about the family planning. What does that involve?
Yeah, so our family planning clinic, we, I'm going to get to this slide where it has it, so I don't miss anything. So our family planning clinic has been around since 1970, and it's a federal grant program. And it's run through, through the state program services. We see males and females for regular exams. We do pregnancy testing, breast cancer screening, cervical cancer screening. We do STD testing and treatment. We do educational referrals and work.
So it's not, it's not like, like offering abortions or referring to abortions and that sort of thing.
So we do pregnancy counseling.
Okay. So does this state require ultrasound before? I should know that answer.
Yeah, recall.
Say Jackie?
Yes. No, you're fine. So Jackie, the community services manager, so today I'm going to be speaking on the environmental and the health network program. So just like Melissa, you have PowerPoints included in this. I will not be necessarily speaking on the PowerPoints today, but wanted to include those in your packet for reference. So with the environmental program, looking at our vester program. Mosquito spray season is complete as of October, and in October, there were zero West Nell cases. For animal bite investigations, they did complete 16 investigations. There were three testing reports and zero positive rindy cases. As far as their food inspections, they did complete 139 inspections in October. And I did want to note that the environmental staff did respond to one truck wreck carrying food in October 2021, and two separate callers were involved in that. And all of the food and beverage product was condemned.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, thank you.
No problem.
That was a big number. So for the laboratory, which is where they look at ice samples, public and private water samples. For ice samples, they had 42 satisfactory, 11 unsatisfactory. For public water, 200 satisfactory, two unsatisfactory. And for private water samples, 34 satisfactory and 13 unsatisfactory. So with any unsatisfactory report, the environmental team does reach out to those individuals or those businesses, and they provide guidance for coordination, and work with an improper cleaning, and then they do follow-ups and re-run samples. So for our health network services, again, there's a lot of programs that are under that, so you'll see the two PowerPoints. You'll also see one from the Jefferson County Health Network, which is a network of community partners that is facilitated by the Jefferson County Health Department that engages in collaborative work to improve health outcomes in Jefferson County. And it's also through their virtual store from the April Health Platform. So I wanted to include that with you as well for reference. So for health education, in October, they did implement the 21, 22 Jefferson County Teen Coalition. And this coalition met with student representatives from local school districts to raise awareness and discuss current issues surrounding youth health. So that includes nutrition, physical health, also looking at substance use and mental health. We were really excited to incorporate the physical health and the mental health into the teen coalition this year. They completed 15 school presentations focusing on healthy habits. And for drug prevention, two Narcan kits and education were distributed. They also completed three drug prevention presentations to over 100 individuals. And drug prevention specialists and vulnerable population specialists, they have begun meeting weekly with representatives from the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department and other individuals from the jail to begin working on that collaborative process. Again, really how we can work to provide additional resources, point of care is needed, and really working with those particular populations and families. We also have been working with schools to train and present information regarding our access to services providing essential needs. Has been our virtual platform linking resources and access to the April House. We're really excited we've been able to believe that in and hopefully launching that with several of our schools very soon. Promise, almost done. So our special healthcare needs programs, our adult brain injury, they have had several referrals, service coordinated assessment, and have about 65 average client interactions in the month of October. And for our children, youth, and special healthcare needs program, they had 16 referrals, 23 service coordination assessments, and over 90 average client interactions that month. And one of our wonderful grants that we are able to be utilizing right now through the Jefferson Foundation is our program support 2122, which part of it is awesome. We get to collaborate very closely with the clinical services and provide direct client services. So that includes services for health, oral health, family planning. So excitedly enough, from May to September, we were able to provide 708 services to individuals without that funding stream due to being uninsured, underinsured, or facing financial barriers would not have been able to receive those services. And that includes immunizations, labs, visits to the wellness van, STD testing, meets, office visits, wellness van visits, physicals, and clo- I'm going to say it wrong, colostomy. But another really exciting event that they were able to attend and provide dental and wellness services was our Jefferson County Homeless Connect event just a few months ago. And they are also planning some additional events, including December, that will be to reach out to homeless populations near the fastest Walmart areas. We're really excited to be collaborating with multiple agencies to be able to provide those services as well as education to that population. So, thank you. Any questions on either of those areas?
Thank you, ladies.
That mentioned last month, these reports, I think, very helpful to illustrate all, all the things and actually probably only some of the things that the Health Department does. So I would encourage anyone who's interested in knowing what the Health Department provides for your tax dollars to take a look at these. And these were excellent reports. There was one other that was provided in our package for public health preparedness, so that's another another set of activities that we provide, so. Thanks, lady.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, Ellen? I have no old business on the agenda. So, uh, new business. We want to establish a legal subcommittee. I talked about this last month. I had asked James and Dr. Henry to act as members of the subcommittee along with our board attorney. They agreed to do that, but I think we want to take a vote on establishing that committee, so.
I make a motion we establish committee as you said to Browners.
Second.
So. I have a motion and second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman? Uh, why am I not being picked for any of these committees? Could I be put on that committee, please?
Uh, it can't have more than two members.
Really?
Yes.
Who says?
At that point, you'd have a quorum of the board, Ms. Davis.
Okay, so why am I, out of all the committees you've been picking people for, and I've been in office for quite a while now, why am I not being chosen for a committee?
As far as I know, this is the only committee we've established since you've come on board.
There's been other ones. There's been a committee for the building project and the resolution that was being worked through, et cetera, et cetera. I'd like to be an expression of opinion on one of them.
All right, certainly consider that. Okay. Okay, so we had a motion and second to create the legal subcommittee. Any other discussion?
What is the legal subcommittee, what's it for, what's it going to do?
Do you want to speak for that, Kristi?
Sure. So the role of the legal subcommittee would be to bounce strategy ideas off of, considering that we have two pieces of pending litigation. So that Jack Garvey, who's working on the opioid litigation, and I'm working on the auto litigation that to bounce strategy across and to send information to the committee to receive their feedback in between board meetings.
And will we get a report from that committee on what was discussed?
I always report to the board in closed session with the status of pending litigation, Ms. Davis.
I think, I think I'd like to see the committee's findings or discussion, you know? Even if we're not going to have, if we're going to be outside of a meeting discussing things by themselves in our committee, we need a report from that committee to the board.
The committee may make recommendations to the board. If it comes time to, like, for example, to file a motion for summary judgment, they may make a recommendation to the board. But otherwise, I report every board meeting the status of pending litigation and what strategy is.
Yeah, I just am recommending that there be a, be a report from that committee from that meeting so that we know what was discussed.
Are you asking for minutes?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I think it needs to be established and run like all the other subcommittees have been that if there's something to bring back to the board for a vote, it gets brought back to the board for a vote. But other than that, we didn't make a report back to the board until it was time.
I must have something to report.
Until we had, you know, hey, this is our suggestion, this is what we're promoting to do, and move forward.
For the purpose of transparency, I just believe that was
It is very transparent.
among board members should be, you know, reported on, on a form of minutes or such to the rest of the board members.
That's on our form.
Ms. Davis, by way of comparison, you have a building committee that has been communicating with my firm and with the architects, oftentimes several times a week in order to make sure that things are still rolling on the building project. And whenever there are steps to be taken that need to be taken by the board, the committee does bring forward recommendations to the board at that time. But it's not that, there's not always something to report, nor is there always something for board action, or necessary board action. So this would be in a very similar nature. But regardless, I, it means always on the closed session as a discussion of attorney-client privileged communication to discuss pending litigation. So to the extent that there are things discussed with that committee, I always report those back to the board.
I just want to understand why we have to have a committee that works with our attorney? When the attorney is, is the person that's making all those decisions, she's the legal person trying to do that. Why we need our board members?
Because sometimes there are things that I need feedback from my client on in between board meetings. This provides me a way to make sure that I have at least a couple of board members that are available to discuss strategy with and to try to make decisions. Because sometimes, I'm sure you know, things don't wait 30 days between board meetings for us to take action at court.
Our attorney doesn't make decisions for the board in the back, Ms. Davis. We all have input, we all have comments.
Well, I would think that, that the chairman and the attorney would be talking and then bring it to the meeting for all of us to hear and to discuss.
We've been doing that.
Okay.
Can I, how many times do I need to tell you that?
Can I ask something?
Sure.
It takes two people to approve a vote of something, right? And if so.
No.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but there's not a public comment. There's not a public comment for what we are voting on. Ma'am, there's not a public second for a public comment.
I'm going to call and push.
Okay. I'll see your question later. Okay, so the discussion, motion and second to establish the legal subcommittee. So all in favor, please say aye.
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 You want to vote?
Aye.
Okay, so that's three to one. Passes.
Mr. Chairman, may, I request that all members in attendance please follow policy by having their face mask covering both their nose and their mouth for the purposes of following the orders of the board.
This is. This is.
What about that?
This is. Okay. Our next item of new business is to act on a request from a board member for all board members to attend board meetings in person unless in case of emergency or at a special board meeting. So do we have a motion for that in order to have discussion on it?
Make a motion.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. So let's discuss that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
You know, I've seen in some meetings, they have plastic around each board member. Why not do that instead of the masks? And it would encourage people of myself who are not comfortable with wearing a mask, you know, we're already six foot apart. Why not have little plastic, you know, that make you feel better, you know? Honestly, I'm still expelling germs breathing through a mask, you know? But, you know, I'm, I'm looking for a way to get ready as masks inside this voting, so.
Mr. Deal, this, this would not be a motion that's on the agenda for the day. The board already voted at its last meeting about whether or not I wanted to rescind the previous resolution regarding masking. So to put this on the table at this point is not on the agenda.
I believe this, I, I don't know who made this request, but I believe it came up because we've had issues with the, I guess, either YouTube or, or screen memes, whatever. I'm not sure what's the proper term for that. I think it's much easier to conduct a business meeting with people in person so that they follow the rules of, of order for the meeting and so that we're not spreading personal opinions, false information, accusations. A lot of the things that have been going on during the meetings that we have screened, so not sure if doing it in person is any better, but I'm concerned that if people don't attend in person, it leads to a lot of conduct that's out of order during the meeting. So, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As elected board members, we bring to the table our thoughts, our ideas, our constituents' questions, concerns. It's not your job to judge whether information given by a board member is misinformation. I, I believe that we should all be able to have it over on the table and say, Mr. Pig, would you like, is there anything you'd like to share? At the board meetings on COVID, there's been time for each board member to share whatever they want to share.
I don't think that's what we're discussing at this point.
And, yeah, I'm just saying.
That's not part of this discussion, so I'm sorry. You're off topic.
Where meetings should be conducted so that we are able to share what we feel like we need to share from our perspective.
I'm not aware that anyone's been denied the opportunity to speak. They should not speak when someone else has the floor. They should not interrupt when other people, you agree with that?
I agree. But give each person a chance to talk and that won't happen.
People, anytime people have asked for the floor, they've got the floor.
Mr. Chairman, can I add a clarification?
Yeah.
For the purposes of the monthly board meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Health Department is conducted in order to conduct the business of the Jefferson County Health Department. It is to approve the funds and the expenses. It is to provide input and to help promote the mission of the agency. And so our board meetings have always traditionally consisted of approval of meeting minutes, providing updates and reports on the center's activities, as well as to provide any board-approved authorizations that are required by law. Otherwise, we have not traditionally had settings where individuals bring independent views to the board. It is a session for the board to conduct the business of the agency as such. And to my knowledge, that is the purpose and the bylaws behind why we have these meetings. And there is no other purpose. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also clarify for the board that the physical attendance requirement is one that is already in your board, in your bylaws, with, with physical attendance being required at regular board meetings unless it is an emergency. So this is simply restating what is in your bylaws already that's been approved by the board.
We go back and, we don't need any action on that, do we?
Well, the board had, had during the beginning of COVID, had, of course, you know, everybody was virtual for a while and then we had kind of this hybrid model. And, and as we are able to meet back in person and accommodate all our visitors, we have yet to have a meeting where we've been, not been able to accommodate visitors who want to come and, and observe the meetings. So at this point, you can make a decision as to whether or not you want to go back to with the bylaw state and everybody be in person, or you want to continue to have virtual options for board participation, for regular meetings.
To clarify, would this allow for a special? If it's a short, short turnaround, there would be the opportunity to potentially.
Right. Sometimes those are hard to schedule and sometimes, you know, you, the only way that you have the ability to get a quorum president is if you have virtual attendance in those meetings. But our regular board meetings are set every year.
I would, I would take you back to regular meetings.
Ms. Davis, we've offered you different opportunities for you to be able to attend, sit down with me and, and our attorney, to try to come to some agreement that works for everyone. You haven't taken advantage of that. And I have to say, it's not like the health department is the only entity in this county, in the state, in this country that requires masks in order to protect the health and safety of-
It's not protecting anything.
That's your opinion.
A mask is like a cyclone.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Don't talk. I'm not going to have to.
That's your opinion.
I don't care if anybody else.
The majority of the board rules on that.
I call a motion to question.
So if you want to try to come to some agreement, you can do that, but I agree. Maybe we call a question of that. So, the motion is to require actual presence, attendance for board meetings unless in case of emergency. And to clarify that, are we talking about an urgency for a board member? That they aren't able to attend?
Yes.
Are we talking about emergency, an emergency meeting?
Now, an emergency meeting would, would be a special board meeting. This wouldn't apply at all in that situation. The way your bylaws are written is that everyone is required to physically attend unless they have an emergency encounter.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I believe what Mr. Pig was saying is already in our bylaws and we should just do what the bylaws say. And the reason we started doing the Zoom on the virtual is because there were, myself included, there were certain people that didn't want to wear a mask and that was our exemption to not, to have to be present here.
You know, as we began, we talked about other options and it's never been resolved.
Well, the religious exemption is a good one.
Ms. Davis, as a reminder, you've been offered a face mask, which, or pardon me, a face shield, which you threw in the trash after the meeting that you were-
It sounded like I was in a tunnel.
And Ms. Davis, you were offered compensation and so on.
Yeah, so we'll call a question on that. So everyone in favor of the motion for personal attendance at board meetings, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any votes?
Aye.
So that passes three to one. And that's effective immediately. So, last item I have of new business is to act on a request from a board member, terminate virtual meeting attendance for board members at regular board meetings, which appears to be, to be the same.
Your bylaws do allow, and so does the sunshine, that if you have a majority of the, of the board physically present, then you can add an additional meeting, sorry, a forum of the board physically present, you can add additional attendance, attendees by teleconference, not necessarily by, by like Zoom. So we, we've, essentially what this would do is we would, we would not, again, with passage number two, number three is probably moot. But what it would mean is that in the event that you have people that are not physically present, that they would just get by phone as opposed to Zoom. That's what your bylaws, Ms. Davis, yes.
Number three is, you can remove it. I would. We're not actually going to have a focus on that. We're not acting on that. Any close session?
I went, I, I thought, I missed it apparently, and I thought there was going to be a discussion also of whether we were going to continue to live stream meetings to the public. Can we discuss that? Kristi, are we going to have to table that?
It's not on the agenda. I can, I can tell you as a point of information that I have spoken with the Attorney General's Office about that and as long as we are able to accommodate the people that want to be physically present, we do not have to continue to live stream.
So we're under no obligation to do that. I think all of us feel like the more information you can provide to the public and they're interested in information from meetings in a single house and as long as the meetings can be conducted in a businesslike manner, which I think is what we just tried to do. So, I, I guess, is the intent to go ahead and continue to do that? I'm just asking at this point. We're live streaming today, right? Does anyone have an objection to that? I don't. Okay. All right, do we have anything for closed session?
Yes.
I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to six one zero point zero two one, section, subsection one and two, three and fourteen.
Second. Motion in second to go into closed session. I think we'll all call for that, please.
Mr. Deal?
Yes.
Dr. Henry? Mr. Freiter?
Yes.
Mr. Pig?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.